Counselor Woodland?
President.
Counselor Feltonner?[637.20][637.20](Music)
President.
Counselor Canelis?
President.
Counselor Columba?
President.
Counselor Falcoff?
I'm here.
Counselor Donato?
Present.
Counselor Baze is not here currently. Counselor Picchirelli?
Present.
And President Sedaris.
Present, thank you. Can I get a motion to go into executive session to consider the purchase exchange of these of value of real property? It's an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
So moved.
One more.
Second.
Wait, okay, that's fine. We have one more. We're gonna let Susan make all the motions tonight.
Okay.
I'm letting everyone know that. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and in this case, its town manager, Michael Driscoll.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze? Uh, excuse me. Counselor Donato?
Yes.
Counselor Falcoff?
Yes.
Counselor Feltonner?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Columba?
Yes.
Counselor Picchirelli?
Yes.
President Sedaris?
Yes, we'll be returning to open session at approximately 7:15.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public forum. Beneath is a couple people. David Kane, please.
Good evening to all the councilors. First, I'd like to make a minor correction to the records of minutes of the last meeting I attended approximately a month ago. My last name was misspelled. It is correctly spelled in the sign-up sheet that I signed up that on that night and in the sign-up sheet that I signed tonight. Second, on that occasion, when I was here approximately a month ago, I asked for the return of four items of personal property that had been taken from me by the Watertown Police Department. I now demand that that property be returned to me because it was taken in violation of the highest law in the country, the United States Constitution. The Constitution requires that no person can be deprived of his life, his liberty, or his property without due process of law. The process that is mentioned by that amendment takes place in a courtroom. It is supervised by a judge. No process has been taken place -- no process has taken place with regard to the taking of my personal property by the Watertown Police Department since the first two items were taken in August 2017, more than two years ago. I demand that that property be returned to me by the end of this year, calendar year, by January 1st. If it is not done, I will have no choice but to file a lawsuit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Leanna Rice.
Hello, town council members. My name is Leanna Rice and I'm a junior at Watertown High School. I'm the Fall 2019 Teen Coordinator for the Trees for Watertown Teens for Trees program. In the summer of 2018, I spent 20 hours a week for six weeks working to collect the data on the town's street trees. Every Monday through Friday, we walked around five miles a day in the heat measuring every urban street tree and recording the data on Open Tree Maps, which any Watertown citizen can access online. We did this so we could see where more trees could be planted and which trees were already healthy and which were not. We need more trees because trees clean the air, prevent flooding, provide homes for animals, and help slow the process of climate change in general. As of the summer of 2019, there are 4,236 trees and 4,340 potential empty planting sites throughout Watertown. This data shows that there is a huge potential for more trees in our town. For example, looking on Open Tree Map, there are approximately 1,834 sites that have no concrete, no asphalt, and no wires above. Approximately 1,700 -- 700 of those planting sites are in planting strips. These are really easy opportunities to plant more trees because the conditions are better than most. I've worked really hard along with other teens to do what I can do, but now it's time for the town to come together to increase our canopy. By planting more trees, we can make Watertown viable in the face of climate change. I request that you focus on hiring a competent tree warden as soon as possible and that you set aside budget money so that more trees can be planted around Watertown. It would also be helpful to educate residents about the town's ability to plant more trees in their front yards where conditions are most ideal for healthy growth. Thank you for listening. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in public forum wish to be heard? Yes, Libby?
Libby Shaw, 73, Templeton Parkway, Trees for Watertown. I'm just following up to second Leanna's statement, mention that once again, we badly need a tree warden, forestry supervisor. It doesn't look as though the job description has been upgraded to include the characteristics of a tree warden, which includes, of course, skill and background with community outreach. For the kind of work that Leanna was describing, you really need to enlist the public support so that those trees, once they're planted, do well. We really need this position to be trill -- to be filled, and I hope the town is making this a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I close the public forum and move on to the next item, which is the examination of minutes. Can I get a motion on the minutes of November 26th?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. President's Report. I don't have anything this evening. I'll have a little more to say later in the agenda. Next items are presentations of petitions, proclamations, and similar papers and matters. And the first one is a proclamation honoring the work of library trustee Tim Tracy. I'm going to ask Councilor Picciarelli if he can read the two proclamations for us.
I don't have --
Marilyn, if you could just get us the copies. Sorry about that. Give us a second.
They finished late.
No, it's okay.
No problem.
Did you have another meeting last night or was it just remember when I saw you last night?
We have two library trustees. We were intending on getting them these proclamations for their last meeting last week, but we lost track of time. So we will get them forwarded to them. Sorry about this.
Okay.
Thank you.
So a proclamation honoring Timothy Tracy as a library trustee. Whereas Timothy Tracy served as a library trustee from January 5, 2010, to December 31, 2019. And whereas Mr. Tracy served as the Board of Library Trustees Chair from January 13, 2016, to December 31, 2019. And whereas Mr. Tracy pushed for a strong library-public-school relationship. And whereas Mr. Tracy used his fiscal experience to advocate for appropriate financial support from town government. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council, the city known as Town of Watertown, hereby extends its appreciation to Mr. Tracy, who served with pride and distinction for 10 years.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. President's Report. I don't have anything this evening. I'll have a little more to say later in the agenda. Next items are presentations of petitions, proclamations, and similar papers and matters. And the first one is a proclamation honoring the work of library trustee Tim Tracy. I'm going to ask Councilor Picciarelli if he can read the two proclamations for us.
I don't have --
Marilyn, if you could just get us the copies. Sorry about that. Give us a second.
They finished late.
No, it's okay.
No problem.
Did you have another meeting last night or was it just remember when I saw you last night?
We have two library trustees. We were intending on getting them these proclamations for their last meeting last week, but we lost track of time. So we will get them forwarded to them. Sorry about this.
Okay.
Thank you.
So a proclamation honoring Timothy Tracy as a library trustee. Whereas Timothy Tracy served as a library trustee from January 5, 2010, to December 31, 2019. And whereas Mr. Tracy served as the Board of Library Trustees Chair from January 13, 2016, to December 31, 2019. And whereas Mr. Tracy pushed for a strong library-public-school relationship. And whereas Mr. Tracy used his fiscal experience to advocate for appropriate financial support from town government. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council, the city known as Town of Watertown, hereby extends its appreciation to Mr. Tracy, who served with pride and distinction for 10 years.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The next one is a proclamation honoring the work of Penny Peoples, Councilor Picciarelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. A proclamation honoring Penelope Peoples as a library trustee. Whereas Penny Peoples served on the Board of Library Trustees from January 13, 2016, to December 31, 2019. And whereas Ms. Peoples served in the Long Range Planning Committee prior to her service as trustee. And whereas Ms. Peoples served as the trustee vice chair from January 13, 2016, to December 31, 2019. And whereas Ms. Peoples provided invaluable fundraising expertise for the library's 150th anniversary gala. Therefore be it resolved that the Town Council, the city known as Town of Watertown, hereby extends its appreciation to Ms. Peoples, who served as the library trustee for four years.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The next one is a proclamation honoring the work of Penny Peoples, Councilor Picciarelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. A proclamation honoring Penelope Peoples as a library trustee. Whereas Penny Peoples served on the Board of Library Trustees from January 13, 2016, to December 31, 2019. And whereas Ms. Peoples served in the Long Range Planning Committee prior to her service as trustee. And whereas Ms. Peoples served as the trustee vice chair from January 13, 2016, to December 31, 2019. And whereas Ms. Peoples provided invaluable fundraising expertise for the library's 150th anniversary gala. Therefore be it resolved that the Town Council, the city known as Town of Watertown, hereby extends its appreciation to Ms. Peoples, who served as the library trustee for four years.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the proclamation?
A motion to accept the proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. There's also a proclamation here honoring the work of Councilor Susan Falcoff. And at a recent event, I told Susan, we only give out one proclamation, but she's getting a second one.
Third.
Third, okay. Second one for me. I'm going to read this because Susan was kind enough when we had a vacancy two years ago, approximately two years ago. Susan was kind enough to accept our offer of filling the expired -- the unexpired term of a former counselor, and it saved us from having to go have a special election. So Susan, for that, first of all, thank you. And then I'll read this one for you. Whereas Susan Falcoff has served as a town counselor with distinction and pride and has demonstrated her true commitment and dedication to the citizenry of the Town of Watertown. And whereas Susan Falcoff voluntarily came back when asked, due to a vacancy, to serve as one of the four town councilors-at-large, serving seven terms for which she has discharged her duties faithfully, fairly, and honorably, and by doing so, saved the town from having to go through a special election. And whereas Susan Falcoff has been a vital link between local government and the community it seeks to serve. And whereas Councilor Falcoff served on various subcommittees, including Economic Development and Planning, Human Services, Personnel and Town Organization, Public Works, State, Federal, and Regional Government, Technology, and Communication Ad-Hoc Committee, and as a member of the committee of the whole. And whereas Susan Falcoff also served as a member on the Open Space and Recreation Plan Update Task Force, the Conservation Commission, the Watertown Arsenal Reuse Committee during the military cleanup of the United States Army Materials Technology Lab, now known as the Arsenal on the Charles. And whereas Susan Falcoff worked tirelessly for the community, being a strong advocate for improving public health and the environment, and reached out to all those in need. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council, acting on behalf of the people of Watertown, does hereby extend its deepest appreciation to Susan, takes pride in honoring her tonight. We thank her for her many years of service and look forward to her continued interest and commitment in community affairs and wish her all the best in her future endeavors. Susan, thank you. Susan, yes.
Thank you. It's -- every minute hasn't been a pleasure, but it's generally been a pleasure, and I'll really miss being part of this team. It's a great town council, and I think I'll miss -- I'll miss -- I mean, I'll still be here, but I'll miss being part of a team. That's been a really wonderful experience for me. Thank you all.
Thank you, Susan. Next item is not -- oh, can I get a motion to accept the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilor DiNardo.
It may not -- every minute may not have always been a pleasure for you, but I've -- it has been a pleasure for me to serve this last 18, 20 months, whatever it is, with you, and I will miss your wit and your sense of humor moving forward. But more importantly, I think in every committee meeting, it really shows how much you care about the people in town, and that's what I think is the true mark of a public servant, and you will be missed, and thank you for your service.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President and councilors. I pulled out my notes from December 12, 2017, so I just changed a couple of things. But I -- in all seriousness, what the council president just read, he read about one of the -- Susan's involvement in community spans several years of humble service as a community organizer and activist volunteering on boards and committees. I request that you focus on hiring a competent tree warden as soon as possible and that you set aside budget money so that more trees can be planted around Watertown. It would also be helpful to educate residents about the town's ability to plant more trees in their front yards where conditions are most ideal for healthy growth. Thank you for listening. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in public forum wish to be heard? Yes, Libby?
Libby Shaw, 73 Templeton Parkway Trees for Watertown. I'm just following up to second Leanna's statement, mentioned that, once again, we badly need a tree warden, forestry supervisor. It doesn't look as though the job description has been upgraded to include the characteristics of a tree warden, which includes, of course, skill and background with community outreach. For the kind of work that Leanna was describing, you really need to enlist the public support so that those trees, once they're planted, do well. We really need this position to be filled, and I hope the town is making this a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I close the public forum and move on to the next item, which is the examination of minutes. Can I get a motion on the minutes of November 26th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. President's report. I don't have anything this evening. I'll have a little more to say later in the agenda. Next items are presentations of petitions, proclamations, and similar papers and matters. And the first one is a proclamation honoring the work of library trustee Tim Tracy. I'm going to ask Councilor Picciarelli if he can read the two proclamations for us.
I don't have any. Read it, Sam, please.
Marilyn, if you could just get us the copies. Sorry about that. Give us a second.
They finished late.
No, it's okay.
No problem.
Got a copy.
Did you have another meeting last night? Or was it just remember when I saw you last night? You had the education.
We have two library trustees. We were intending on getting them these proclamations for their last meeting last week, but we lost track of time. So we will get them forwarded to them. Sorry about this. Okay.
So a proclamation honoring Timothy Tracy as a library trustee. Whereas Timothy Tracy served as a library trustee from January 5th, 2010, to December 31st, 2019. And whereas Mr. Tracy served as the Board of Library Trustees Chair from January 13th, 2016, to December 31st, 2019. And whereas Mr. Tracy pushed for a strong library-public-school relationship. And whereas Mr. Tracy used his fiscal experience to advocate for appropriate financial support from town government. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the City, known as Town of Watertown, hereby extends its appreciation to Mr. Tracy, who served with pride and distinction for 10 years.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the proclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The next one is a proclamation honoring the work of Penny Peoples, Councilor Picciarelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. A proclamation honoring Penelope Peoples as a library trustee. Whereas Penny Peoples served on the Board of Library Trustees from January 13th, 2016, to December 31st, 2019. And whereas Ms. Peoples served in the Long Range Planning Committee prior to her service as trustee. And whereas Ms. Peoples served as the trustee vice chair from January 13th, 2016, to December 31st, 2019. And whereas Ms. Peoples provided invaluable fundraising expertise for the library's 150th anniversary gala. Therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the City, known as the Town of Watertown, hereby extends its appreciation to Ms. Peoples, who served as the library trustee for four years.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the proclamation?
A motion to accept the proclamation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. There's also a proclamation here honoring the work of Councilor Susan Falcoff. And at a recent event, I told Susan, we only give out one proclamation, but she's getting a second one.
Third.
Third, okay. Second one for me. I'm going to read this because Susan was kind enough, when we had a vacancy two years ago, approximately two years ago, Susan was kind enough to accept our offer of filling the unexpired term of a former councillor, and it saved us from having to go have a special election. So Susan, for that, first of all, thank you. And then I'll read this one for you. Whereas Susan Falcoff has served as a town councillor with distinction and pride and has demonstrated her true commitment and dedication to the citizenry of the Town of Watertown. And whereas Susan Falcoff voluntarily came back, when asked, due to a vacancy, to serve as one of the four town councillors-at-large, serving seven terms for which she has discharged her duties faithfully, fairly, and honorably, and by doing so, saved the town from having to go through a special election. And whereas Susan Falcoff has been a vital link between local government and the community it seeks to serve. And whereas Councilor Falcoff served on various subcommittees, including Economic Development and Planning, Human Services, Personnel and Town Organization, Public Works, State, Federal, and Regional Government, Technology, and Communication Ad-Hoc Committee, and as a member of the committee of the whole. And whereas Susan Falcoff also served as a member on the Open Space and Recreation Plan Update Task Force, the Conservation Commission, the Watertown Arsenal Reuse Committee during the military cleanup of the United States Army Materials Technology Lab, now known as the Arsenal on the Charles. And whereas Susan Falcoff worked tirelessly for the community, being a strong advocate for improving public health and the environment, and reached out to all those in need. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council, acting on behalf of the people of Watertown, does hereby extend its deepest appreciation to Susan, takes pride in honoring her tonight. We thank her for her many years of service and look forward to her continued interest and commitment in community affairs, and wish her all the best in her future endeavors. Susan, yes.
Thank you. It's every minute hasn't been a pleasure, but it's generally been a pleasure, and I'll really miss being part of this team. It's a great town council, and I think I'll miss, I mean, I'll still be here, but I'll miss being part of a team. That's been a really wonderful experience for me. Thank you all.
Thank you, Susan. Next item is not, can I get a motion to accept the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilor Donato?
It may not, every minute may not have always been a pleasure for you, but it has been a pleasure for me to serve this last 18, 20 months, whatever it is, with you, and I will miss your wit and your sense of humor moving forward. But more importantly, I think in every committee meeting, it really shows how much you care about the people in town, and that's what I think is the true mark of a public servant, and you will be missed, and thank you for your service.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President and Councilors. I pulled out my notes from December 12, 2017, so I just changed a couple of things. But in all seriousness, what the council president just read, he read about one of the, Susan's involvement in community spans several years of humble service as a community organizer and activist, volunteering on boards and commissions. One of the things the, tonight's proclamation didn't have was back in 1992, was on the Multi-Civics Center Board of Directors. And then 1997, as the president mentioned, the Watertown Arsenal Reuse Committee, 99 to 2003, the Conservation Commission, and then 2004, and the Open Space Recreation Plan Update. I said it two years ago, almost to the date, and I'll repeat it again, but Susan's favorite quote is, "To change the world, you have to start somewhere." And I certainly, I think all of us know how hard she's worked tirelessly for the citizens of Watertown, improved the quality of life, and spared for the residents who work and live in Watertown. I applaud your diligence and dedication to this community over those years, and those efforts are very much recognized. And I want to thank you, Councilor, that Town of Watertown is a better place due to your efforts as councillor-at-large for 14 years. And I personally appreciate our working relationship and our friendship. Thank you.
Councilor Cornelius?
Thank you. Susan, thank you for being Susan.
I have no choice.
Can't be another Susan. You always bring a smile to our faces whenever we're serving on committees, always something witty comes out, and we truly appreciate it because it's so spontaneous and from the heart. And thank you so much for stepping forward and taking minutes when I always take five giant steps backwards and don't want to do them. Susan actually took a trip to Greece a couple of years ago and came back with a traditional evil eye that I carry with me in my car, and I truly appreciate it, and thank you. And I hope you take many more trips and remember us all. Good luck, and it's been a pleasure.
You, Angie.
Councilor Picciarelli?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I've been very lucky to serve with Susan since 2008, when her first comeback to the council and my first time on the council. And I want to say, you know, we served on Public Works Committee and Economic Development Committee together, two very difficult committees. And I will speak to, everybody spoke about Susan's wit and pleasantness to be around, which sort of, you know, I agree with. But I also want to talk about her leadership. As Susan being chair of the Public Works Committee, starting in 2008, we really turned the town around. The vision that Susan had about, at that time it wasn't called Complete Streets, but sort of making the streets friendly for everyone, demanding that when we repaved streets, we actually replaced sidewalks or put in sidewalks, was quite extraordinary. And I think you look at today, you know, 12 years later, what we've accomplished in terms of public works, a lot of that has to do with Susan's tenure as chair and leadership as chair of the Public Works Committee, and that's something that I, you know, really cherished, working with her on that. The other thing is economic development, and, you know, we faced a lot of complicated rezoning issues, a lot of complicated challenges with development, and Susan's leadership on the Economic Development Planning Committee was also astounding, particularly as we worked to do the RMUD rezoning. Extraordinary leadership, balanced many different constituencies, lots of people who had very strong opinions, and we just worked our way through it in a very pleasant, sort of collegial way, to come up with something that I think was very well, very well done. So I do want to really acknowledge your leadership on those two particular things, and I particularly enjoyed working on those committees with you and getting that work done.
Thank you. Councilor Baze?
Yes, I, the town did definitely luck out when we got Susan back, but I just want to say, I personally also, this was such a great benefit to have you come back because as a close friend and someone I could turn to when I needed someone to ask questions, someone to guide me through this first term, which it's, you know, it's not always easy getting your sea legs when you are on your first term as, first term as councillor, and it was wonderful to have you there to help me through this journey. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Falcoff? Councilor Felton?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to thank Susan. If I had to pick one thing that stands out for me is, I feel like our conversations, you never lost sense of the human picture of things, whether it's rules and ordinances or how we move through the town. So I really appreciate that, and I'm going to, I'm going to miss kind of somebody who I think was my buddy, who's checking for grammar and making things easy to understand in plain language, but I really appreciate everything you've done for us, and that I know you will continue to stay in touch in taking my calls and sharing advice with me as well. Congratulations.
Thank you. This is terrible.
Councilor Felton?
I'll make mine short then. As someone who had a little bit to do with Susan's winning, coming back on the council, I am very happy that I could play a role in that because she has taken up the challenge since that. You know, it's very difficult to serve, lose, and then come back and win, and she did that. And from then on in, it was our benefit, we benefited greatly from her service for over these many years. So I very much appreciate all she has done and her friendship during that period.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you again, Susan, but we still have some more business to take. You can't leave yet. Item nine is public hearings. The 9A is a public hearing and vote on a petition for a grant of location by National Grid to install and maintain a six-inch prefabricated regulator with approximately 100 feet of 16-inch gas main and approximately 140 feet of 12-inch gas main in Belmont Street, abutting St. Patrick Cemetery, near the intersection of Duff Street, all of which to replace and remove the existing regulator in the intersection of Duff Street and Belmont Street. Please identify yourself and welcome.
My name is Barbara Kelleher, and I am from, I represent National Grid on this project, and it is to update the regulator that is currently in Duff at Belmont. And that's, you said my spiel.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing, is there any member of the public that wishes to be heard on this particular petition? Seeing none, and I close the public hearing and make a, ask the council for a motion to bring this to the floor.
Okay. Mr. President, make a motion that we approve the grant of location for National Grid at, for the location at Belmont Street at Duff Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Councilor Picciarelli?
So, thank you. So I was looking at the regulator, it's going to go in the sidewalk with the doors or the metal plates. The restoration, question always comes up, is restoration, and it looks like that that's going to be restored, the sidewalk with, concrete sidewalk with a granite curb?
Yes.
To provide protection to the vehicles not driving over the plates?
Right, they will not. It is in the sidewalk.
It is in the sidewalk, but there will be a new curb there to prevent people from parking on the curb.
Yes. I can't speak absolutely, but I'm pretty sure there will be. There will be no, except for the doors on the regulator, there will be no structure on the sidewalk, and yes, I'm sure they will be put back.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Good night.
9B is a public hearing and vote on a petition for a grant of location from Comcast Cable, Inc., to install two 4-inch conduits or two-by-four-inch conduits, starting at utility pole 47, crossing Pleasant Street, as shown on SOW 60 feet to rear of sidewalk located on private property at 350 Pleasant Street. Continue on private property behind the sidewalk toward 330 Pleasant Street, and place a 24-by-36-inch vault on private property to feed buildings 350 and 330 Pleasant Street, Watertown. Please identify yourself.
Yes, my name is Manuel Fattaro. I'm the project manager for Comcast for Watertown.
And give us your project.
Sure. So this is to feed 350 and 330 Pleasant Street, which has a new development being built there, residential properties.
This is also a public hearing. If there's any member of the public that wishes to be heard, seeing none, I close the public hearing and ask for a motion from the council.
Mr. President, make a motion that we approve the Comcast request for grant of location at 330 and 350 Pleasant Street for underground conduit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilor Donato?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, some of the comments I'm going to make with regard to this apply to the subsequent grants of location. Another one was previously before us, back in October, and one thing that was provided to us by Mr. McGoon was a list of all the double poles in town. So I note from this list that Comcast has seven double poles. Now, I know that this petition in front of us tonight has nothing to do with a double pole, but I would love to know, and it's, I feel like it's better to bring it up in this type of situation where the building is not currently inhabited, where oftentimes when these grants come in front of us, somebody's living there, and I feel like I don't want to push the issue if we're going to hurt an individual citizen. But I guess the question I have for you is, short of denying or not even taking up future grants of locations, how can we get Comcast to address? Now, you're just a small offender on this list, but, you know.
I would love to address that.
That'd be great.
Are you talking about pole 45?
There are.
Pole 45, that's the double pole right on the corner?
There are seven of them. I mean, not a number 11.
Are you familiar with the Engines Report that is filed from National Grid in the process? I just want to know if you are familiar with it.
I am not.
Okay, so the process of how poles get changed and how double poles get removed is through a process called the Engines Report. So whoever installs the pole, the pole, who we say is the set pole, which could either be Verizon or National Grid, typically one of them, depending on who joint owns the pole, they will set the pole. And then there's a process that gets put into place through the Engines Report. And how that works is, if, let's say Verizon is the set pole, they will set a pole, they will enter that information into the Engines Report. And from there, it will go through a process. So the way the process has to work is whoever the highest individual on the pole moves first. So that's typically the electric company, so typically National Grid or Eversource, whoever the actual focus. So they will move. Once they've done their work, they will go back into Engines Report, the next person in line, or the next company that's responsible. So we have a unique situation. The way the poles work is it's National Grid or Electric, and then right below there, Communications. Now Communications also means fire alarm, RCN, and Comcast. RCN is one foot above us. So what happens is when they place it into Communications, who's the main company here? Is Comcast. So it ends up coming to us. We have a team, Ted Ariel, that physically goes out and checks those utility poles. He goes out and verifies if Comcast can actually move on them. The problem is, is if RCN is above us, or the fire alarm is above us, we can't do anything. We have to wait for those two companies to move first. So we refuse to be the next in line. It gets kicked back up to National Grid or whoever is above us, and then it comes back through the process. Those poles all have RCN on them. Ted Ariel works for me directly, and I report with him for every town, not just Watertown. And we have a pretty good rapport as far as trying to deal with Kenny Bates and Alex Ortiz, who are the two individuals from RCN. So typically, instead of trying to run through the report, we just send them an email and say, hey, you got a couple of poles being held. That's typically the reason why poles get held up over a long period of time. Again, we can't physically move specifically because for us to move, we have to cut the top of the pole directly above us and lift our cables over. If they're above us, we cannot do that. We also cannot touch their equipment. We can't physically move their equipment. All we can really do is send an email. So I know specifically of two poles sitting on Pleasant Street that I've asked RCN to move for us. We're just waiting for their response.
So how do you apply pressure to RCN to do that?
We're kind of limited on how much pressure, obviously, we can apply to them. The only thing we can do is reject our set and kick it back into the Engines Report, and that will send it back over to National Grid, and National Grid now has to fight it with RCN. One of the problems is we don't own those poles. We're just renters of the utility pole, so we really don't have any buy-in as to other renters. It's not like we owned them. If we owned them, we could simply move them.
Helpful, but not helpful.
So I can maybe give you this. We have an individual that manages the, all the utility poles in the area. He manages about 80 communities. I can give you his information or have him contact you, and if you have someone that you would like us to work with on getting those removed, I'll make sure that he works with you on Comcast situations. I know in other towns such as Newton, we go to monthly meetings with the city of Newton to discuss double poles. That's our job. So if we want us to do that, that is not a problem. I'd be more than happy to have him come in and talk to you about any poles or any things that we got going. So that's entirely up to you, if you would like us to do that.
Before you leave, if you could give that contact information to the gentleman in the blue shirt?
Absolutely.
That would be very helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilor Felton?
Just a follow-up question. You mentioned you have a good working relationship with who? I missed exactly if you're talking about National Grid or RCN?
Well, we have a good working relationship with all three of them, with the electric company, Verizon, and RCN.
I'm just trying to clarify the delay because it made it sound like RCN was the holdup, but you said you have a good.
On those two utility poles, they are RCN. They're above us. So for those specifically, I know, because I've walked down Pleasant Street to verify why we haven't moved on those poles, and those two are being held up by RCN. The email has already gone to Alex Ortiz and also to Kenny Bates, who are the two individuals that handle that at the RCN level, and we just, we sent it over to him. But again, we can't really put a lot of pressure on them, although he is going to be supporting with us in feeding 330 and 350. Maybe I can get him to move a little quicker.
Any other questions or comments? Do we make a motion on this?
Yeah, I made a motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I was very interested in this conversation.
I just, for Watertown, it's, N-Star or Eversource, not National Grid is the problem.
Okay, N-Star, correct.
Thank you. Just make sure that contact information goes to that.
Sure. Thank you.
Next item is a public hearing and vote on a petition for a grant of location from N-Star Electric Company, doing business as Eversource Energy, to install 51 feet of conduit in Pleasant Street southerly from pole 1648, approximately 416 feet west of Waltdam Street, a distance of 51 plus or minus feet conduit to provide underground electric to 330 Pleasant Street. Please identify yourself and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Carroll, and I'm here on behalf of the Eversource Company. So the first petition is going to be on Pleasant Street. It's going to be approximately 51 feet of conduit from pole 16 over 48. This is to provide underground electric service to, it was actually in the letter as 330. It's actually, we made a minor revision today. It's actually 350 Pleasant Street.
Okay. This is also a public hearing. If there's any member of the public that wishes to be heard on this issue, seeing none, I close the public hearing and ask for a motion from the council?
Yes, Mr. President, I just want to preface this by saying that I went down to Pleasant Street to look at all these four petitions, and Maureen was there and looking at it, and we had quite.
Let's make a motion for.
So the motion, so the motion is going to be to approve the petition for, for N-Star for the grant of location. It says 330 Pleasant Street, but I would want to approve this petition subject to four conditions. Number one.
Hold on. Make a motion to put it on the floor. We'll get a second, and then you can talk, say anything you like.
Well, I want to make a motion. The motion would be to approve the petition subject to these four conditions.
Okay, that's fine.
Condition one, the petition shows the reason for this work is to provide service to 330 Pleasant Street. It shall be amended to show it providing service to 350 Pleasant Street instead. Number two, the underground conduit from pole 1648 shall not terminate at the property of 360 Pleasant Street as submitted with the drawing with the petition. It shall run easterly and terminate on the property of 350 Pleasant Street in front of the new pad-mounted transformer. Number three, to run this extra distance, the length of the conduit will be longer than the plus or minus 51 feet, as shown in the petition, and the exact length and routing of the conduit shall be determined by the Department of. Public Works. And number four, the pole is marked with an X indicating it will be replaced by Verizon. If that is true, this petition is subject to the following condition, that the underground conduit may be installed on the new pole, but cables run in the conduit shall not be connected to the primary conductors until all remnants of the old pole are removed, and Eversource shall work with Verizon and other attachment entities to make this occur. That's the motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
No, second.
Discussion.
So, and if I could just...
Counsel Pichorelli.
If I could just say, so, so I did meet with, so this was a little bit complicated, and the drawing was a little confusing, and Ms. Carroll was, was really good with it. And I went and I talked, after I met with her, I went to the DBW, and I met with Kevin Duffy and Matt Schuman to work through this, that this would be sort of an appropriate way of doing it. And I think this, rather than delaying this petition to another meeting, that if we make this petition approved subject to these four conditions, they can move forward with getting the work done.
Are there any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Counsel Pichorelli, for working through all of those details so that we can keep this moving, and I'm glad that you happened to come across Maureen today.
Serendipity.
9E is a public hearing and vote on a petition for a grant of location from N-Star Electric Company doing business as Eversource Energy to install 119 feet of conduit in Pleasant Street southerly from pole 1645, thence turning northerly, northeasterly, approximately 104 feet southwest of Waltam Street, a distance of 119 plus or minus feet conduit. Maureen.
Okay. Again, this is a petition on Pleasant Street. It's going to be to install approximately 119 feet of conduit from pole 16 slash 45, a distance of 119 feet. This is going to provide underground electric service to 330 Pleasant Street.
This is a public hearing as well. If any member of the public wishes to be heard, seeing none, I close the public hearing and ask for a motion from the council.
Mr. President, make a motion that we approve the petition for N-Star for the grant of location for underground conduit to 330 Pleasant Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. 9E is a public hearing and vote on a petition for a grant of location from N-Star Electric Company doing business as Eversource Energy to install northwesterly from pole 1646, approximately 220 feet southwest of Waltam Street, a distance of nine feet plus or minus of conduit to provide underground service, electric service to 385 Pleasant Street.
Again, this is a petition on Pleasant Street, northwesterly from pole 16 slash 46, approximately 220 feet southwest of Waltam Street, distance of about nine feet of conduit. This is to provide underground electric service to 385 Pleasant.
Thank you. This is also a public hearing. Any member of the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the petition for the underground conduit for N-Star at 385 Pleasant Street, subject to the following condition. Pole 1646 is a double pole. This petition is subject to the condition that the underground conduit may be installed to the new pole, but cables run in the conduit shall not be connected to the primary conductors until all remnants of the old pole are removed, and that Eversource shall coordinate with Verizon and other attachment entities to make this occur.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, Ms. President, so this one also, Ms. Carroll and I looked at this. This was in front of the council before. It's a little bit of a sordid tale. But the property owner was there, and he's anxious to install the pad-mounted transformer. This will allow him to do that. There's two cables, RCN and the Verizon telephone cable are the only two things that still need to be removed on this pole. And the property owner said he was already in communication with RCN to move their cable. Once that RCN cable is moved, Verizon come in and move their phone cable and take the old pole out. So I'm hoping that this can all happen relatively quickly, within the next few weeks.
Okay.
So anyway, that's why we did this, but, but it is important, I think, for us to maintain the pressure on removing these double poles. But thank you, Ms. Carroll, for your effort this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Well, okay. Any discussion? Counsel Donato.
Is this the grant that was before us when Jeremy withdrew the grant?
Yes.
Because the owner ran the cables without receiving a grant of location?
They installed the underground conduits that this is approving already. It's a long story, but, so that's why it was removed. And they, the property owner actually was fined for doing work without a permit, and after the fine was paid, we were then authorized to vote on retroactively approving the work.
So...
But we're approving it with conditions because the double pole still hasn't been approved.
Right. So I guess my question is, whose responsibility is it to ensure, if they've already done work without receiving a grant of location, whose responsibility is it to make sure that they actually remove the double pole before they connect?
Well, this, this condition I added there, so they can, they can run the, the conduits are stubbed up at the bottom. Eversource can extend the conduit up the pole. They can run the conductors from the primary down to the transformer pad, but they're not, this grant of location with this condition will not allow them to connect it until the double pole is removed. So that's, the pressure we have is, the conduit's there, the wire's there, but they just can't hook it up to power the building.
I guess my concern is if they've done work in the past without getting permission, what's to stop them from doing it this time?
Let's, let's, let me get...
Yeah.
Good evening, councilors.
Sir.
Kevin Duffy, Public Works here in Watertown, and just wanted to let you know that the building to have power would be necessary for it to get the certificate of occupancy permit, which would go through Matt Schuman and myself. So we are aware of that, and we're aware of this condition that the council will be putting on this request. So we will be able to at least inform the other departments in town of this condition and just make sure that the, the certificate of occupancy is not permitted to the applicant until this condition is met.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
9F is a public hearing and vote on amending the town manager's compensation. This is also a public hearing, but before we open it up for a public hearing, I have some, I'm going to read the ordinance, and then I have some comments, because we did have our comments two weeks ago, but there are several issues here that I'd like to bring this, this evening. This is an ordinance amending the town manager's compensation. Whereas the Town Charter of the City, known as the Town of Watertown, Section 3-3 provides that the town manager shall receive such compensation as may from time to time be established for said office by ordinance. And whereas the Division of Local Services performed a full financial management review and indicated the town manages its budget well and has tight financial controls in place. And whereas Standard and Poor's Rating Services upgraded the town's bond rating to AAA, their highest rating in 2000, in November of 2013, and cited strong management conditions and plans to address its unfunded pension and other post-employment benefits, OPEB liabilities, as two of the factors in the bond upgrade, and the town has maintained the AAA bond rating. And whereas, the town has reached an agreement to continue the town's group health insurance coverage under the Group Insurance Commission through June 30, 2021, which allows the town to continue providing quality group health insurance to its employees and retirees. And whereas, the town manager proposed a long-range financial plan for addressing other post-employment benefits, OPEB liability, and for financing the three elementary schools' building project within the confines of Proposition 2.5. And the proposed plan was formalized in the Town Council's fiscal year 2019 Budget Policy Guideline 2A. And whereas, the town is on the verge of having a fully funded retirement system on July 1, 2020. And whereas, a performance evaluation of the town manager for fiscal year 2019 was conducted, and an internal review was undertaken of salaries of other town employees received during fiscal year 2019, and an external review of other town managers' compensations was reviewed. And whereas, the current salary of the town manager, established effective July 1, 2017, is set at $195,000. Now therefore be it ordained by the Town Council of the City, known as the Town of Watertown, that Chapter 19 of the Watertown ordinances is hereby amended as follows, by deleting Section 1, compensation, and inserting in its place the following. Section 1, compensation, effective July 1, 2018, fiscal year 2019, the town manager's compensation shall be set at $205,000, which includes a $200, a $2,500 equity adjustment. What's not in this ordinance, it's also consistent with other departments, that, other department heads and employees that got a 2% COLA and a 1.5% performance-based adjustment. For background information now, as indicated in the proposed ordinance, a performance evaluation of the manager for fiscal year 2019 was conducted, and an internal review of salaries was undertaken, of salaries for other town employees for fiscal year 19, and other, an external review of other town managers' compensations. With respect to the performance evaluation of the town manager for fiscal year 2019, which is linked to tonight's agenda item, I'm going to read some experts from excerpts from the evaluation. The evaluation forms were forwarded to each council member for their personal evaluation, and the personal, the personal evaluation form presents a series of questions in seven categories. The evaluation itself, and this is where there's a difference from two weeks ago, we revised it and sent out a revised update on this, and I'll read that at this point. The town manager assumed office in 1993. He's in his 27th year serving the community in this capacity, and is in his 43rd year of employment with the Town of Watertown. Six of the nine councilors rated the town manager as exceeds expectation with a score, an average score of 4.5. Two of the nine councilors rated the manager as meets expectations with an average score of 3.8. One of the nine councilors rated the manager as below expectation with a score of 2.9. The overall rating for manager Driscoll is 4.2, which represents a score description of exceeds expectation. And these are the sections that he was rated on. Section A is relationship with the town councillor, with the town council. In this section, councilors rated the town manager as exceeds expectation with an average score of 4.3. Section B, community relationship. In this section, councilors rated the town manager as meets expectation to exceeds expectation with an average score of 3.5. Section C, staff and personnel, personnel relationships. In this section, councilors ranked the town manager as meets expectation to exceeds expectation with an average score of 3.7. Section D is leadership and professional capability. In this section, councilors rated the town manager as exceeds expectation with an average score of 4.4. Section E, business and finance. In this section, councilors rated the town manager as exceeds expectation with an average score of 4.5. Section F, personal qualities. In this section, councilors rated the town manager as exceeds expectation with an average score of 4.7. Section G, fiscal year 2020, goals and objectives. In this section, the town manager was rated as exceeds expectation with an average score of 4.0. With respect to the external review, compensation information from 12 communities, including Watertown, was gathered, and this information is linked to tonight's agenda item as well. This information shows that Watertown, that the Watertown town manager's compensation ranks 12th, 7th out of the 12 communities, and that Mr. Driscoll is the longest-serving of the town managers in their respective communities. Adoption of tonight's ordinance would result in the town manager's salary being ranked as 6th of the 12 communities. Additionally, although Watertown does not have a full-time assistant town manager, nine of the 12 communities that were reviewed have either one, two, or three full-time assistant town managers, with the breakdown being four communities have a full-time assistant town manager, four communities have two full-time assistant town managers, and one community has three full-time assistant town managers. The fiscal year 2019 funding level of the 15 full-time assistant town managers for the nine communities is $2,030,518, with the lowest annual appropriation being $109,840, and the highest annual appropriation being $433,200. In closing, I will state what I stated a couple of weeks ago. Having served as a councillor at large for 13 years, I always thought the manager was a hard, a very hard and diligent worker. Since I became Town Council President in January of 2010, and working significantly closer with Mr. Driscoll, I'm, I'm very impressed with the way he runs our community. We've been well-served by the manager, who has guided the town through some of the most difficult financial times we faced in generations. And subsequently, we've, he's proposed a long-range financial plan where the town is on the verge of having a fully funded retirement system, has a long-range financial plan for addressing unfunded other post-employment benefits, and for financing the three elementary schools' projects within the confines of Proposition 2.5. I look forward to working with the manager and the Town Council to continue building on these successes for years to come. And given all of the above, we're bringing forward this proposed ordinance tonight, and I, I will now open it up to the public for a public hearing on the ordinance amending the town manager's compensation. This is a public hearing. Is any member of the public wish to be heard? Seeing none, I close the public hearing and ask for a motion from the council.
I'll make a motion that...
We adopt the ordinance amending the town manager's compensation. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counsel Lucrentis.
Thank you. Mr. President, thank you for the presentation and the background regarding Mr. Michael Driscoll. I think of the, of my colleagues sitting before you this evening. I have worked professionally with Mr. Driscoll the longest since he came over to the Town Hall as the Town Treasurer, and I was in the Department of Community Development and Planning as a contract employee. So we've known each other for many years. I respect Mr. Driscoll and his commitment to our community, as I'm sure that he respects his colleagues here on the Town Council. I must make it known, we as town councilors are elected in our own right. We do not work for each other. I do not work for Mr. Driscoll or for my colleagues. A year ago, May the 5, 2018, I brought forward the fact that there was no contract by and between the city known as the Town of Watertown and Mr. Driscoll. The contract expired on June 30, 2014. This sitting council and previous councils have not voted to withdraw the contract and to have a council, a town manager serving at will. It's always been a presumption that there was a contract in place. On May the 22nd of 2018, we went into executive session to discuss going forward with the contract. Here we are, a year and a half later. There still is no contract. Here we are, a year and a half later, there still is no contract. I've agonized over this, and I don't think that anybody should be in this situation, but it goes with the territory. This evening, in executive session, we were advised by Town Council President that there has been conversation with the town manager regarding a subsequent contract to be executed in the near future. I've toyed with the thought of not supporting disagreement, but then I say that with what the council president has told us, that I will support it this evening, with the understanding that a, a contract will be forthcoming. And I'm going to leave it to the Town Council President to update us on any specifics that he feels would be appropriate to offer at this time. Thank you.
Any other comments on the compensation? Counselor Woodland.
Well, I, I just want to know that similar to other town employees at this level, we're, we're just adjusting the fiscal 19 compensation, so we are in fiscal 20 right now, so this is an increase for the prior fiscal year, and similar to what we've done with other town staff, we have a certain number of, we have a certain timeframe by statute that we can go back and do this, it needs to be done sooner or later. But this percentage and this amount is directly in line with what we've done with other town employees, what's in line with, as council president said, with other town managers and surrounding communities that are comparable to our demographics. So, just very objectively, if there was, if we weren't doing all these profoundly impressive things with our finances, this would be warranted. And I can't stress enough how lucky Watertown is to be in the fiscal state that we are. It's not like this in other cities and towns. We have the privilege of being able to debate whether or not our, our three new elementary schools that are being built without a debt exclusion will be net zero or not. That is a privilege to have that debate, because that does not exist in any other city or town in Massachusetts. And the reason why we have that debate is because our administration has, for decades, been meticulous about putting our town in a, a strong financial place. So, I, I think it's really important that we don't forget that, and we use those examples to help guide the way that we compensate our staff. Thank you.
Counselor Felton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just say that I'm, will be supporting the motion tonight, and, but I'm also heartened to hear that this will be the last time that we are looking at granting salary, et cetera, changes without having a successor agreement in place.
Any other comments? I, before I ask for a vote, I just want to state a couple of things for the record. I will take full responsibility for not pushing an agreement, but as Counselor Woodland stated, we're in a pretty good place here. And we went several years ago, we went about seven years without a contract with the fire department. What happens in cases like this is whatever is in, in the current contract that's expired, those conditions and obligations remain in place until a successor agreement. So, I, I feel like there was some, that we had plenty of safeguards in place already that we were not in jeopardy of the town manager walking out the door. That being said, after we take this vote, there will be a specific motion addressing this as we go forward. So, if there's no further discussion, can I get a roll call on this, please?
Counselor Felkoff?
Yes.
Counselor Felton?
Yes.
Counselor Canelis?
Yes.
Counselor Palumbo?
Yes.
Counselor Picchirelli?
Yes.
Counselor Woodland?
Yes.
Counselor Baze?
Yes.
Counselor Donato?
Yes.
President Sideris.
Yes, thank you. I want to ask Counselor Falcoff to make a motion, please.
In response to the concerns about contract, I'd like to make a motion to bring forward for consideration a successor agreement between the Town of Watertown and Michael J. Driscoll by February 28th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next item is motions, orders, and resolutions. In 10A is a first reading on a proposed ordinance amending Title IX of the Watertown Code of Ordinances, Business Regulations, Chapter 116, Bring Your Own Bottle Regulations, General Rules by Reducing the Cost of the Required Permit from $1,000 to $300. Mr. Manager.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. As you just indicated, tonight's a first reading on this, if you will, reducing the permit fee for the BYOB, which helps provide for the background. In a moment, the public hearing and advertisement will, public hearing and vote will be considered five weeks from tonight at the January 14, 2020 Town Council meeting. But by way of background, the Honorable Town Council back in September of 2015 had adopted an ordinance to allow a bring-your-own-bottle option for Watertown restaurants. The intent and the purpose of that ordinance was to allow restaurants in Watertown that do not have an alcohol license to apply for a bring-your-own-bottle permit, and thereby allow patrons and customers to consume their own alcohol beverages at the restaurant's premises. So again, that ordinance 2015-57 was adopted on September 22, 2015. Subsequent to that, there was a rules and ordinance meeting in March of 2017 where there was discussion about reducing the fee from $1,000 down to $300. That action item was adopted at the March 28, 2017 meeting. Unfortunately, there wasn't a first reading and a legal ad to move forward with reducing the permit fee from $1,000 down to $300. Thus, this effort tonight of putting a first reading and having the ordinance changed to reflect Town Council's policy guidance, as I just indicated, will, that public hearing will occur at the January 14, 2020 council meeting. Mr. President.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is an announcement and ratification of a vote regarding 321 Arsenal Street, the Moessian Center for the Arts.
Mr. President, I will recuse myself.
On November 26, 2019, under Item 2 of the agenda for the Town Council meeting, the council met in executive session to consider a matter affecting the lease and value of real property, extension of the term of the sublease between the town as landlord and the Dorothy and Charles Moessian Center for the Arts, Inc. as tenant, for the property known as Building 312 at the Arsenal on the Charles. The council voted to authorize an amendment to the extension provisions in Section 4.2 of the sublease to allow for a single exercise of the tenant's right to extend the term of the sublease for the total allowed period of 40 years, and to approve such an extension with the extension period starting on March 1, 2022, which is the day after the current 10-year term would end. Now in open session, I will ask for a motion to ratify that vote, specifically that the Town Council vote to authorize amendment of Section 4.2 of the sublease between the town and the Dorothy and Charles Moessian Center for the Arts to allow for a single exercise of the tenant's right to extend the term of the sublease for the total allowed period of 40 years, to approve such an extension, for an extension term to start on March 20, March 1, 2022, and direct the town attorney to prepare an amendment for signatures by the parties.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Falcoff.
Yeah, I, I was very happy to support this. The Moessian Center has proved to be a great asset to the Town of Watertown, and for me, this vote is, is an expression of appreciation for all that they do.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item 11 is committee reports, and 11A is a committee on public safety report regarding the review of the public safety study and the management and operation study of the police department. Counselor Felton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. The Committee on Public Safety convened on Tuesday, December 3, 2019, at 5:00 PM in the Philip Payne Lower Hearing Room here at Town, in Town Hall. I was present as chair, along with Vice Chair Vincent Picchirelli. Also present was Police Chief Michael Lon, Fire Chief Robert Quinn, and Deputy Fire Chief Thomas McManus. The purpose of our meeting was to complete the review of the public safety study conducted by Matrix Consulting Group, and make recommendations regarding the management and operation study of both the fire department and the police department. The committee reviewed three separate documents, they're all attached to the meeting minutes dating from 2012 all the way through 2014. Counselor Picchirelli, who was present for all the meetings since beginning in 2012, opened, offered opening, opening comments, and felt that the study has now outlived its usefulness. However, he noted that since 2012, he was impressed how much each department had improved over the past seven years, and how many of the recommendations of the study were actually implemented. I led a discussion of all the items identified as potentially needing further study, and in the end, all agreed that no further action by the Town Council is needed at this time, and that any future enhancements would best be handled through the normal budget process, the capital improvement program, and/or collective bargaining agreements. Chief Quinn and Chief Lon, both who were neither chief at the time, said that while the study had its flaws, primarily for canned recommendations by Matrix, it was useful for initiating discussion between the fire and police departments and the Town Council, and it afforded an opportunity for councillors to learn about the departments, as well as for the departments to hear from councillors about Watertown's priorities. The meeting adjourned at 6:09 PM, and I thank Counselor Picchirelli for preparing the minutes and report.
Can I get a motion to accept the report?
Motion to accept the report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. 11B is Committees on Human Services and Rules and Ordinance Report Regarding the Noise Regulation Ordinance. Councillors Palumbo and Donato are the chairs. Who's reading the report this evening? Counselor Palumbo.
Thank you. President, the, the committees met on Thursday, September 12th, at 2000, at 7:15 here in the council chambers. Present were all the members of the committees, except Counselor Woodland. Also present were Captain Ray Dupree, Jesse Myatt from the Department of Public Works, Counselor Picchirelli, residents Steve Kennedy, Leo Martin, Alodia Thomas, and others, and you can see the sign and sheet that's attached. I called the meeting to order with the reminder that we are continuing to discuss revisions to Watertown's 1983 noise, noise ordinance, and I recognize recent emails from Susan Cook, who spoke to health concerns, and Steve Kennedy, who suggested some text changes, specific text changes. I also drew attention to the proposed language borrowed from Somerville for Section B of 95.03, and I noted that we need input from town staff about standardized noise measure, measurement tools, which also need to be included in the definitions. Printed copies of the ordinance, draft, draft ordinance as of August 6th, 9th, excuse me, were made available to all present. It was also noted that further review and discussion was needed on the current draft, especially for noise standards, exceptions, and how they may affect enforcement in zones. Marjorie Greenberg shared concerns about increased traffic noise, and she is aware that Canada and Australia use devices that capture decibel, decibels, as well as license plates to help with enforcement. Devices can be portable or stationary. Others spoke to concerns with trucks breaking noise in early morning and afternoon hours in different areas of town. I read this last section of the 2000, of July 2, 2019, minutes allowed referencing Section 95.06. There were questions about understanding background noise, how it was established, how the duration of sound contributes to noise pollution, and maybe considered damaging to human health with long-term implications. It was agreed that the chart, chart for duration of sound needed more clarity and could be reformatted to include day and evening hours. Text review of 95.06B produced several questions about what noise is allowed versus what, what is limited distinguishing between Saturdays and legal holidays versus weekdays, how construction noise can be mitigated depending on the source and location, whether landscaping equipment was included in this section, and other concerns. Alodia Thomas expressed concerns that 90 decibels is very loud and would like to see a cap of 80. Kate Coy noted that OSHA recommends levels below 85 dB decibels. The committee discussed the potential merits of changing the time allowed for audible devices and activities. Watertown Police Department Captain Dupree stated a preference in general for aligning times with neighborhood communities for enforcement purposes. So the following are a number of motions that were made throughout the meeting. I made a motion second invite Counsel Falcoff to adopt operating hours 9 to 5 on Saturdays instead of 10 to 6 for Section B1, noise associated with construction or demolition and home improvement work undertaken by commercial enterprises. Counsel Donato motioned for the amendment of 8 AM to 5 PM, seconded by Counsel Felton. After discussion, Counsel Donato with due as motion was stating a preference for 8 AM for operating Sundays. Counselor Palumbo questioned, called the question, it was approved 4 to 1, and, I mean, 4 yeses, and Counselor Felton was present. If it'd be okay, Counselor Donato, could you pick it up from there? Thank you.
Falcoff and Thomas both offered to revisit local businesses to learn about equipment, decibel ratings, or labels. The committee discussion continued with a focus on B2. Palumbo made a motion, seconded by Falcoff, to adopt operating hours of 9 AM to 5 PM on weekends and legal holidays, instead of 10 AM to 6 PM for B2. Noise associated with loading and unloading deliveries, truck/vehicle idling, that was approved 5 to 0. Dan Eisenberg expressed concern that B3A and B, B3A and B, and four exceptions were included in the draft, and that 80 decibels is too high of an allowed noise level. 70 decibels is the noise pollution cutoff generally recognized, because 80 decibels is not just 10 more decibels, it is perceived as twice as high and considered a health nuisance. He and other residents are also annoyed to always be woken up at 7 AM, and thinks landscapers should not be allowed to start up equipment before 8 AM. Appreciation was expressed for including specific language about leaf blowers, but there is also interest in whether noise concerns can be addressed along with other general, general landscaping equipment if we cannot just copy Newton, quote unquote. It was noted that Falcoff's conversations with local businesses confirmed that blowers' decibel levels are labeled, and operators do not use or know of specific mufflers for leaf blowers. Baze noted that there are often several leaf blowers in use at the same time, which increases the problem. Felton asked if the staff had provided the committee with common local business practices and any impacts to changes in operation times. Palumbo made a motion, seconded by Donato, to adopt the hours of 9 AM to 5 PM on weekends and legal holidays, instead of 10 AM to 6 PM for B3A, to permit noise associated with power equipment, ground maintenance equipment used by residents or commercial enterprises such as lawn mowers and power saws. That was approved 5 to 0. Discussion ensued about ambient noise context and its relation to the start and end times suggested in B3A, B, and B4. Most did not want to extend the time beyond 8 PM, and several felt there was generally too much noise beginning, beginning at 7 AM, so there would be a large psychological benefit to change allowing noise starting at 8 AM instead. Baze made a motion, seconded by Palumbo, to adopt the hours of 8 AM to 8 PM on weekdays instead of 7 AM to 8 PM for B3A, to permit noise associated with power equipment, ground maintenance equipment used by residents or commercial enterprises such as lawn mowers and power saws. Two, there were two yes votes, Counsel Baze and Counsel Palumbo. There were two no votes, myself, Counselor Donato, and Counselor Falcoff, and one present vote made by Counselor Felton. That motion failed. That motion failed. Palumba made a motion, seconded by Feltnar, to lower the proposed maximum noise levels of 80 decibels to 70 decibels in B-3A. Noise associated with power equipment, ground maintenance equipment used by residents or commercial enterprises such as lawn mowers and power saws. That was approved 4, 1 with myself voting in negative. Discussion followed with questions about whether B-3A and B had conflicting meanings. What were reasonable maximum permitted noise levels from different types of equipment, adding a chart for more clarity, suggestions to look to practices in Cambridge, and more concerns. The committee will consider deleting text in both B-1 and B-3 that reads, "Further, no individual piece of equipment shall exceed a maximum noise level of." Both Thomas and Marcia Ciro volunteered to draft an example chart for the committee that lists different types of power equipment, including lawn equipment, with their generally recognized noise ratings. The committee acknowledged acceptance of Sections 95.03 and 95.04, and noted C and D in 96.06, and moved to discuss Section 95.07 exceptions. Most of the concerns and exceptions focused on B and C around the power, the allowed amplified music during certain sporting activities, for how long, how often, what type of music, at what sound level, and enforcement of policies. Palumba asked Steve Kennedy and Dick O'Connor if they would be willing to share suggestions for a rewrite of Sections B and C to share with the committee. Attendees expressed a desire for strong enforcement beyond adding signage to recreational facilities. At 10 PM, there was a motion to adjourn by Counselor Feltnar, which was seconded by Counselor Palumba. That passed 5 to 0, and the minutes were respectfully submitted by Counselor Lisa Feltnar with mine and Counselor Palumba's great thanks because these meetings are quite difficult to track. So, thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to accept the report?
Motion to accept the report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Counsel Palumba?
No, I accept. I wanted to make us say something.
11C is the Committees on Public. By the way, those two committees are continuing to meet on this noise ordinance regulation. Counselor?
May I? I just want to say, we met after, that was a September meeting. We had a very long meeting on December 2, and I do want to appreciate the work of Counselor Donato, who has been keeping track of the various versions of this ordinance. And also, though she doesn't have the minutes yet, we do much appreciate Ann Coggi, who took minutes at that meeting on December 2. We are meeting again on December, we're meeting again on December 17, and I just wanted to say that we are hoping that at this meeting, and which has already been announced, thanks to Marilyn, it also includes the latest draft, thanks to Counselor Donato. And at this meeting on the 17th, we will be taking any suggested changes, and the committees will be voting on those. And it is hoped that at the end of that meeting, that version will go to the lawyers, to the town attorney, and then from the town attorney to the Town Council for a vote.
Thank you. Next item is 11C, which is the Committee on Public Works and Rules and Ordinance Report Regarding the Development of an Ordinance and Regulations for Small Wireless Facilities Located in the Public Right-of-Way. Counselors Pichorelli and Donato are the chairs of that. Who's going to?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, really, the purpose of this report is to get the material from March 19, April 30, and June 20 meetings, and just get it in the public record and get this ready for whatever joint committee, people are going to be on the joint committees next term to continue working with the Department of Community Development Planning to finalize the ordinance and regulations.
Can I get a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Counselor.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Yes. Yes.
I guess I'm not sure what we're approving. Are we approving all the attached minutes or just this summary in that, in statement that was made by Counselor Pichorelli? So, I'm not sure what my vote means, my last vote.
Well, the report of December 10 includes the minutes and attachments of March 19, April 30, and 20, so we're approving the entire report.
All the minutes.
Okay.
And it's mostly tech, very technical material, so, but it's just, I think it's important that we get it in the public record.
Thank you.
For the next term.
Counsel Feltnar.
And just minor detail, the stationary needs to be changed to reflect that Susan Felkoff is on the council.
That's how old this was.
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. New business, any new business to come before the council? Communications from the town manager. We have requests for confirmation of appointments and reappointments to the Historic District Commission. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council are bringing forward tonight pursuant to provisions of the Honorable Charter and the Town Council Ordinance Regarding Appointments to Town Boards and Commissions and Committees. Bringing forward three appointments and two reappointments to the Historic District Commission, which requires council confirmation. The three appointments would be as follows. Robert Bloomberg, who will be the Historical Society Representative from 59 Carroll Street, to a term November 15, 2020. James Bensinger, residential property owner, 130 Mar Robin Street, a term to November 15, 2021. And Greg White, 7 Edward Road, November 15, 2021. And the two reappointments will be Javi Steiner at 18 Marshall Street to November 15, 2022, and Lynda Sternberg, 18 Marshall Street, to a term November 15, 2022. Under the Town Council rules, Mr. President, members of the council, these appointments would be, and reappointments would be referred to the Council's Committee on Economic Development and Planning for their review and report back to the full Town Council.
Thank you. Any other communications from the manager?
Yeah, I've got two more issues, Mr. President, members of council. The first one is regarding some holiday hours of operation at the Administration Building. In observance of Christmas, the Administration will be closed at noon on Tuesday, December 24, and will be closed on Wednesday, December 25. And in observance of the New Year, the Administration Building will be closed at noon on Tuesday, December 31, and will be closed on Wednesday, January 1. And then lastly, I want to thank the Town Council for its action tonight in compensating. I look forward to working with the Honorable Town Council and continue building on the progress we've made in providing the highest level of services to the citizens of our community while utilizing the taxpayers' dollars as efficiently as possible. Mr. President.
Thank you. Requests for information, any requests for information? Seeing none, announcements? Any announcements? Counselor Baze?
Yes, so tomorrow, December 11, the Anti-Bias Coalition is having a sort of a seminar called Let's Talk Equity, Identity, and Race. It's actually a group of restorative justice circles that are designed and facilitated by the Watertown Middle School and Watertown High School students. It's, and the purpose is to engage parents and the community in courageous conversations exploring identity and race. So, it's tomorrow, December 11, from 6 to 8 PM in the Watertown High School cafeteria.
Any other announcements? Counselor Feltnar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to remind folks that tomorrow evening at 7 PM here in the council chambers, the planning board meeting, and 85 Walnut Street project is before the board for consideration. Thank you.
Any other announcements? I have one. I was notified on my way in this evening that we have a library trustee person that was elected has moved out of town, so the, in January, we will deal with how to deal with that. The charter has a couple of options for us, so we will be dealing with that in January. The inauguration is on January 2, and I'm not going to go any further than that right now.
January 2.
Public forum, any member of the public wish to be heard? Before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I'm going to ask for a motion, I'm going to ask for a moment of silence in memory of Counselor Palumba's sister who passed away this past week. So, please rise for a moment of silence. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Wait.
Oh, sorry.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And thank you very much, Susan. And happy.
Pleasure, thank you.
Won't be the same.
Thank you. (applause).[1749.75]